Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for February 6, 2023. Tonight on our agenda, we have two items. This is the Armory update, and it works a little bit in conjunction with Old Powerhouse update as well. We do have a special meeting and executive session scheduled for after this work session. With that, would you like to introduce the first item?
Yeah, hi. I'm Evan Pletcher, Capital Asset Department Project Manager. Here to talk to you about some programming options we have developed for the Old Powerhouse. So my hope for this meeting is to review and hopefully select a programming option for the facility. Just a short background on the facility. As part of the facility's master plan, we took a look at the building and noted several deficiencies, several of which we addressed back in 2016 when we took over the building from the Aspen Art Museum. Immediate needs, that kind of thing. And the rest of the items, we have wrapped into a base scope that will preserve and modernize the facility. On top of that, we have two programming options to present for your selection. The first includes a large public gathering area downstairs, and the other is an all-city In both programming scenarios, we have city offices upstairs. So included in the base project's scope, we are going to address accessibility throughout the facility. That includes adding an elevator and new ADA compliant bathrooms. We're going to do some code-required structural roof framing to accommodate today's snow loads. We intend to enclose the existing porch structure, which will add about 180 square feet to the facility. Also would like to maximize the functionality of the shop attic storage area, install new high-performance mechanical and electrical systems, and replace the building sewer line. So that's the interior scope that we're looking at in the base project. Moving on to the exterior, we're going to be doing a lot of envelope improvements to preserve that historic brick masonry, replacing cracked, spalled bricks, repointing waterproofing improvements, adding a whole new roof and roof structures to prolong the life of the roofing structure, new gutters, downspouts, heat trace, replacement of nonhistoric windows to improve thermal performance, working on some envelope improvements as well, insulation, et cetera. And then we do need to remove a few trees that are growing within the foundation. It's select. It won't be too many trees, but there's kind of no way around it. Then we've got a couple more historic windows that we need to refurbish, and we're going to do minimal work in the parking lot to kind of revamp it with the sewer line going all the way to the street. So getting into our programming options here.
Real quick, Evan, before we jump there, are there any questions about the baseline work, which we are hopeful fits within the scope, that does scope will fit within the authorized budget that you have for the project? Just let us know, are there any questions, though, about particularly that external work? Again, as we've talked about in the past, this has to happen regardless of the programming from staff's perspective.
Rachel?
Yeah, I think naturally we want to take good care of a historic building and bring it up to standards and expectations. What I'm hoping is that we will be applying for state preservation funds as well through the historic tax that's on gambling in Central City and Cripple Creek and things like that. I think this could be very much a prime project for them. The other kind of comment I would make is that I look so much at how this relates to the armory and uses. So I want to go through the programs, but until we talk armory, I can't talk about offices here or no offices or all offices or whatever. And this final comment, just to, you know, as we go forward, I would love if we have some idea of what people mean by a community center, because I think there are just so many different visions of that. We have a nice senior center, and they'd like to expand, and they need new amenities. But what do people mean in that? So that I don't want duplication of meeting space if the meeting space will be there, vice versa, things like that. Thank you.
So what we'll do is go through our presentation, and we'll with, you know, whatever discussion the council wishes to have before having the armory presentation, and then we'll circle back around for clear, clear final direction on both topics, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor? Could we handle it that way? Thank you.
I have a question about, in the memo somewhere in there, it's about windows that were started in 2017, some of them were replaced, and then here again, we see new windows. Are the ones that were replaced in 2017 staying in, and we're replacing additional windows?
Yeah, so back in 2017, we replaced eight of the 10 historic windows downstairs. By replaced, I mean restored. They're still the same original windows. There are two windows that are kind of tucked in behind the bathroom wall right now, and we intend to restore those as well as part of this project. So it's just two historic windows that we're planning to restore, and then the replacement windows are the 1970 edition windows upstairs and kind of throughout the facility.
And is it the intent to go triple pane?
Triple or double, I guess, will certainly meet the energy code requirements, but whatever makes the most sense.
Put in 2017, what is their energy efficiency?
It's probably pretty low, so we can look into adding some storm windows behind them as part of this project if there's an interest in that. It'll all be stuff that we address as part of the envelope, making sure we hit today's code requirements as best as possible with the historic structure.
Yeah, for the baseline, that covers what I had. I have a lot more to talk about as we go into usage and how we arrived at that. But, and I noticed that we've flipped the order of the agenda here that we're going with Powerhouse first, but I don't think you can separate the two based on the programming changes that are in effect, but let's go through and then circle back.
Sure.
Any questions on what's presented already?
Okay, go into the programming options here then. So option one is the public space option. What you're seeing on the screen here is on the top, the existing layout of the downstairs, and on the bottom, it's a reconfiguration that includes a large community room, catering kitchen, storage area. The bathrooms change position in order to accommodate today's code requirements and meet occupancy levels for a large community space. The workshop loses some space, but it still meets our needs, and it does include the porch addition on there. So, let's see. There's also the elevator shaft being shown in here, which is new. There's no elevator in the facility right now. So this will basically, the biggest changes with this plan are, we're going to, what we'd like to do is to actually add a large opening right here in the historic wall to do a glazed, like roll window type of opening. We definitely heard the feedback of engaging the public lawn space, and we think this could be an excellent way to do that. It's also facing the river. It's just a pretty, it would create a pretty phenomenal public gathering space, we think.
I'm sorry, could you point that again?
Yeah, so right here.
Okay.
So if you see right now, it's just a solid four-layer brick wall, and then right here, this is glazing now, and this opens up onto that small kind of amphitheater area.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
What do you think the dimensions of that open space would be, that community room as it's labeled?
I'd say probably 20, 20 feet wide is my guess. You're talking, are you talking about that?
Where your cursor is.
Community room square footage. I don't have, I can look that up, but I can tell you that we think it'll accommodate 100 to 300 people depending on the usage. So, you know, if you've got a bunch of tables in there, 100 people, if it's standing room only, up to 300. And the bathrooms can accommodate that, so that's kind of what we're looking at. Let's see, okay, I kind of went through those items.
And while he's doing that, these are very, just for the benefit of the public, those are very conceptual numbers until there's a further refinement of the plans and a conversation with the fire marshal, those occupancy loads are not confirmed.
Yeah, thanks. It's solely based on the space availability at this point. There's lots of other factors. Yeah, thanks. So with this plan on, this is the lower level, we also would like to expose some of the historic masonry in the large community space. So we're thinking the wall with the glazing on it could have that historic brick exposed. Right now, it's all drywall in there. And we think we could provide some excellent educational opportunities to display the historic nature of the building, both in the lawn space and inside of the building. Moving to the, do you have any questions on that level? So that's, that's the large public space. The upstairs of the building includes the addition of a dormer, and that is on the east side of the building here. Right now, there's a pretty slanted roof upstairs and a lot of missed opportunity for good office space. This will also improve the lighting, functionality, and ventilation in the upper-level workspace. The idea with this plan are, or the, this plan will house both the Special Events Department and the Capital Asset Management Department. So that is what the upstairs looked like. So that is option one, the public space option. Here are some renderings, so this is what we think it might look like with that opening, engaging the lawn there. Let's see.
And that includes the dormer as well?
This does include the dormer upstairs. That's how we can fit both departments upstairs, yeah, and just have pretty separated uses.
Okay.
Yeah. So here is a rendering of what that looks like, another view here. A couple of the pros that we get from this plan are, we're maximizing the functionality of the facility, at least the upstairs for office use. The downstairs workshop still meets staff needs. We can vacate the Main Street Cabin and turn that into employee housing. Council can explore the option of potentially moving Sister Cities from this building over to the Old Powerhouse, so you can free up some space over here. And also the historic brick that we take out of the wall opening, we can use to patch up and replace bricks that are spald and cracked. Could be, we'll be able to source something otherwise, but that'll make everyone's lives a little bit easier. Okay, so, moving on here, some of the downsides of this plan, the utility billing, IT and transportation departments will need to remain either in the armory or be in another location throughout the city. We also anticipate with the opening we're creating exposing brick and probably some HVAC mechanical upgrades needed for a public gathering space. It's going to be more expensive than just creating offices in the Powerhouse. We have submitted a pre-application to Historic Preservation about this plan, and they have given us a pathway forward if we wanted to pursue it. Any other questions on the public space option? Yeah.
If, if we do move Sister Cities function down there, have we given thought to what that would be used for here? Would it be additional meeting space, or could it potentially be for one of those departments you listed?
So to clarify, there is not a Sister Cities room in City Hall. The Sister Cities rooms' programming is to go back to the armory. Temporarily, they're making use of the Pearl Pass Room for their group meetings. However, as you get into looking again at the programming at the armory, the Sister City needs, while they're, they need a meeting room for board meetings, but when they have exchanges coming, they need a large space. And it really is a community gathering. For example, last night, I was at the Abetoni Gathering, because I'm hosting an Abetoni student right now. There were 50 of us, that we had to find a place in the community to gather for a shared meal. There weren't many. We actually ended up outside the city limits for it. Those are the kinds of things that, as a community, we're placing somewhere else because of the lack of these opportunities within the city limits. So that, that's really the initial planning. I can't remember the square footage, but when Jen comes up, she'll give you an idea of what they're trying to figure out in the armory as the permanent Sister Cities room. At this point, we have not engaged Sister Cities in a conversation about the armory versus the Powerhouse either. We really felt the first step was with you about this notion of a community room, and should that be pursued here.
But again, just so I'm understanding, and I know the Sister City program has grown tremendously and is a real benefit to many communities, including our youth, but can it be multiple use? Yeah, it's not just for them, it's for them when they need it.
It's a label. It's the naming of the room.
That's what I thought, and a bit of perhaps a scheduling priority for when they're having these groups come in, but otherwise, it'd be multi-use.
And, and so the Pearl Pass Room, would it change its use in any meaningful way?
No, the primary purpose of the Pearl Pass Room through the facility's master plan and through the programming of this building with multiple reiterations with different councils has been, we needed a staff training room, and we needed a large staff meeting room. And so that has been its primary function and its supporting. We do bring in boards and commissions quite regularly into that space as well, who do not require the video technology at the same level as this room or recording capabilities of this room. So Open Space and Trails, for example, meets in there regularly. I can't, out of the 16, I think three, four of them are meeting in there every month.
Yeah, major retreats in there and EOTC meetings and such.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks.
And we did have a Sister Cities with Chimacapu, and that was pretty full.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, it's a wash on the old panaboard on Main Street, because both plans vacate that and put special events into the Old Powerhouse.
That's correct. Yeah, I listed it as a pro for both programming options. Yeah.
Evan, I got a quick question for you. Was any consideration given, or maybe it doesn't lend itself to it at all, but the entryway being moved from the side of the building to the parking lot end?
We initially, back when we were looking at this in 2017, had planned to do that. However, at this point, we are hoping to continue using that as a shop area. We also, I don't believe, are planning to provide necessarily parking for events. We'd have to get more into the programming on that, but right now, the plan would be to keep the existing main entryway as the entry into the building.
So you did consider it?
We did consider it, yeah. We just thought there were some kind of easy square footage to be gained there that we could utilize in the existing shop. If that's something we need to explore more, we can.
You know, I would not, I would not dare to sit down and start redesigning things on that level.
Yeah.
To know that you have considered it gives me a level of comfort that you've explored it. The reason I say is just because of the layout of the building, and if it was, separating your entrance from the middle can open up the uses going through. But if you've already thought about it, then I appreciate that.
Yeah, we have. So can I move on to the?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, so the office space option, we've got existing and conceptual here. You can see the large space more or less stays the same. It's, it's a similar layout for office spaces. We aren't doing the glazed opening to the river. Still have a kitchen and storage area. Still need to do the bathrooms. Shop space is the same. There's space for the elevator and mechanical systems as well. This will also include the trash enclosure that's off on the outside of the building. So the biggest difference here is obviously the public space turns into office space. Moving to the upper level, this is, this is actually the same plan as presented in the public space. So nothing really changes on the upper level. It's still office spaces. It still houses special events and asset management. The difference here is we are able to in-house, let's see, so we're able to keep in-house all of the city departments in need of a space, and departments don't need to be in the armory. So this is going to be a less, we think it's going to be a less expensive option it should be than doing the public space option. Probably not a massive difference in cost, but a little bit less expensive. All of the office spaces we're creating are in line with the verified program and facility's master plan. We still can vacate their Main Street Cabin and use that as housing. Like I said, the armory can be fully vacated, and a few of the cons here are, the facility's not available to the public, and we're going to have to get more creative in activating that lawn space. I think we can still do it, but it's not going to be such an easy idea, so.
Yeah, I was thinking, the main thing is you'd have to be able to design some security lockoffs and still have restrooms available. I mean, that's the primary need, and then, of course, there'd be potential management issues.
Yeah, and you're talking about with the public space?
No, I'm talking about activating the lawn without the public space.
I see, okay.
I know, you would need to have an ability to use restrooms and lock it off and manage security, but other than that, yeah, be creative, take a little more effort.
Yeah.
Hang on, let's see. Do you see those, do you see those as compatible at all? If this was all office space, do you think that we would have opportunity to use the lawn? Do you think there's design opportunity to do that?
Well, when I had mentioned the lawn in prior, it was that I have seen it used for local weddings or picnics or gatherings and that space, and when the art museum was there. I don't think the Chamber has done that, but they've had food and wine tastings there. I would just like to be able to return that lawn to some sort of lawn usage. It's not so much that it has to have public space inside. I love the public space design. It looks really very cool, but, you know, there are other needs about office space and things like that that we've worked with from the beginning. So, no, I just think it would take a little more creativity, but I'd love to see a lawn space that after five, people could, you know, listen to a little outdoor music or whatever. But, you know, we're always balancing competing interests. You can't have music too loud here in a theater in the park interfering with their show, you know, so you gotta work those sort of things out.
So that was Sedis Ward.
Ward and then Skippy?
Yeah, I don't know where to start diving in about the programming of this building versus the armory. I do know that the Hurst Theater does have, Theater Aspen Theater has the right to use areas down there for fundraising and for, for events. I am, I've always visualized that area as being a buffer between the hustle and bustle of downtown and the residence, residential neighborhood on the other side of the river. And to increase activation was, was looked at for about seven months back when the Old Powerhouse went through an RFP, and it was turned down by council back then before, I don't think Tori was on at that time, I don't think anybody who's on this council was on that council, but we went through a seven-month process of the use of that property and engagement of it, what kind of activities should be allowed, what kind of activities are compatible with the residential neighbors just down the road and up the hill, Hunter Creek, Hunter Longhouse Centennial, my house. So as far as activation of that space, I'm not, I'm not real keen on putting a lot of effort into activating a lawn space for large events. And I, I don't know when the invitation is open for getting into the programming of this versus the armory, because you can't really separate the two.
So question as to how much we've considered, and it may be just something we need to delve into more, and Ward, were you on that council for the power plant? You weren't either, right? It was before you. Yeah, so I guess my, my question is just, if we were going to consider that outdoor programming, what are the other constraints, and how would it affect the potential use? So that, you know, are there uses that if it's not office space there, would be, let's just call it permissible now, given the other constraints, be they neighbors, Theater Aspen, environmental, et cetera? Or are those constraints limiting enough that we wouldn't have to substantially change what is outdoor allowable with office? I'd love to kind of understand that a little better if we know.
Want me to take it? Sure. I thought I was maybe getting the look over there. So a couple of things. First, first of all, you know, is the community room, part of the reason why the two departments we're talking about are good for this fit is there's a lot of times they're not physically at a desk. They, if they're doing their jobs well, they are out and about, on job sites, meeting, meeting with, you know, event producers, et cetera.
You're talking about events and assets?
Right, that's part of the reason why we targeted these two departments for both their staffing numbers, their storage needs, and how their work is done. They have to have landing zones for their work, for sure. So we think that the programming in here is something that, that really, future councils, once this is further along, can wrestle with. But what we've provided you here is a very common platform. Most communities use for community rooms, right? This is very similar to what you see at the library community meeting room. It has the restroom capabilities, it has the light catering, so not a full catering kitchen, but a warming kitchen type of experience available, along with a flexible meeting space that tenants can arrange or rental clients can arrange into a format that fits what their particular event is. What we would expect is a conversation in the future- What we would expect is a conversation in the future to counsel about what those parameters need to be. For example, what makes something eligible to go there as an example? You know, is there a residency requirement? What kind of fee should be charged, if any? All, all those kinds of things. So is this an alternative for where someone's trying to find a place for their bat mitzvah and graduation party for their child? Because there, maybe they're living in a very small unit that can't accommodate those type of celebrations? Or do you want it to be an income generator? Do you want this to be rentable corporate space? That would be revenues for your general fund. So those are all things in the future that you'll need to decide. So I'm not too worried about the physical constraints or conflict with the staffing above. I, I view those are very, things that we can very well work through. It's really about whether you think that, and in many of your conversations, you've talked about wanting to have more community gathering space is why we've put this option out there for you, that we thought this might be a niche for what you've been asking for. And we're looking for your feedback today if it's on track.
Got it. I guess my question was more around the downstairs option. So Rachel's talking about outside. If we just think about one example being, you know, a wedding with outdoor amplified music, is that something that already can't happen because of neighbors? If it can happen, would it then not be able to happen because there's offices downstairs?
So it depends on what kind of wedding? How big is the wedding? What time is the wedding? There's all kinds of things like that that are like a special event application that really, I think, are a level of detail that, that we aren't prepared to discuss with you this evening. But we would look to our special events code that you've already approved as guidance for us. We have a lot of feedback from those neighbors about how light and sound affects them. And we would take that into consideration when we brought back to you recommendations about if and when that space could be programmed at certain hours.
Yeah, those are all details, I would say, about what would be allowed or not allowed. Sizes, amplification or not, things like that.
Yeah, but it's.
He's recalling what happened last time and saying that, you know, there was a potential lawsuit. Maybe it even got filed, I don't remember. But I think what Skippy's getting at is, was that founded off of restrictions due to the zone or due to the?
Yeah, I mean, what are our constraints? Because it might look cool to have this down there event space, but we don't want to build it if we could know now that none of the community uses we're imagining are going to happen anyways, right? Or the other way around. If we know that those community uses are wanted, but it can't work there, well, then it probably makes more sense to put them in an enclosed armory. So I'm just trying to get a sense of what is and isn't possible.
And a data point I can share with you is in our conversations with the fire department about their community meeting slash boardroom that they make available. Our community room, it's a police station, and our community room at the library, they're all in demand.
They're booked.
There, there's demand for HOAs. There's demand for small, small community gatherings focusing on locals primarily. So I, at this point, we can, if you want us to go back and quantify that demand, we can. I'm going to tell you, it's kind of a tedious exercise, but we can do it. But we routinely get phone calls about, hey, I'm just trying to figure out where we can do X, Y, Z in town because the, the commercial venue space is not attainable to a lot of our residents any longer for some of these things. So perhaps they're living in some of our deed restricted housing. They, they are already packed in that they can't do some of these, these celebrations, whether it's a hundred year birthday party, a one year birthday party in the winter. Like it all comes up, all of them come to our door looking for help. Thank you.
John?
Just a few random comments. I would be curious to know if, if, this probably doesn't exist, but some type of catalog to know what, what and how many communities meeting spaces we have. I think that would be helpful to me to know how to, to decide on this formally. I really like the idea of this community space down at the art museum. At the powerhouse, I'm sorry, because I remember so many good times down at the old art museum. And what a great space that is to be activated. But I am leery of it because of the problems that came up during the brew, the brewery kerfuffle. That was, that got super contentious and I wasn't even part of it, but I remember it was super contentious. It just seems to me that if we can have utility billing, IT and transportation all in a city owned building where we don't have, have to have them paying rent and maybe they don't have to. But I'd just like to see all our, our departments housed in our buildings. And if it costs less to do that than having a community room, I think that's a good thing.
Rachel and then Ward, actually.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to discussing the armory next. And I, I mean, I think we've all seen some fairly grand plans that people have sent in and, and the comments of a dining hall or, you know, shared kitchens and things like this. That takes a lot of space, you know? I've seen some of these kind of shared multiple kitchen food court opportunities down in Denver and some of the buildings they've rehabbed. And, you know, it's one thing to visualize the people walking around the halls. It's another thing to visualize the freezers and refrigerators and stoves and ventilations and sinks for each individual type of vendor or kitchen you're going to have in there. And it takes up a lot of space. And so I'm a little interested in the less offices, the possible over at the armory to be able to make that fit. And I also feel fairly strongly that the ACRA offices should be on the third floor or the second floor or something like that, but not on the first level floor. The visitor center activities, sure, and the forest service, sure. But there's no reason to have pure office space on the first floor of that facility. And again, I know there's some grand visions out there that really show kind of gutting the whole building and making it a little bit like a European train station, which are very beautiful and multiple levels and different little stalls and so on, so forth. But it, none of those show back of house. None of those show where those people store their goods for their, their product or how it operates as this sort of thing. And that will take a lot of space. There's a lot of not forward facing space needed to run those sort of operations. And so a lot of my, my issue is if getting more space there to get what we really would want as a community center in the heart of town it means more offices down at the power plant. So that's kind of how I'm looking at it. But I really, I, I don't like what we read through the packet of the amount of first floor square footage that would become office spaces at, at that center. I mean, that, that sounds to me like it becomes, you can't do this larger vision plan of opening it up and, you know, things around the side and so on, so forth. So I, you know, maybe that's, I, I understand that might be wish listing and that's, those sort of proposals are not necessarily in our funding basket right now. But I don't want to preclude those sort of things by pre-committing to so much square footage on the first floor.
Allow me. The usage in that square footage that was delineated was for the interim use and the conversation.
Not the long term?
Not the long term.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. It just still is going to get awful touchy to figure out how do you gut a building while they're in interim use and move them up and things like that.
When, I'd like to give Jen an opportunity when you're ready to present that, Mr. Mayor, because we've had very direct conversations with ACRE about our intentions of not providing them interim, an interim location and hence why it's been part of our lease negotiations.
During the construction?
Correct, during.
The remodel, okay. All right. Are we going to transition over?
Yeah.
Get some more information? Okay, Ward first, and then I've got something else I want to add to the record.
Yeah, you're asking a question, Ward, is there a preference? I, I can't answer that without getting a little history here. First of all, I was surprised to see option one on this work session because I, I don't think we ever had a work session that, that directed staff to have public use of that building. In 2015, there was an advisory vote to use the armory for community purposes. I'll draw your attention, our attention to the work session on 51622 this year with community outreach. All, the majority wanted to have the, as much space as possible for community use in the armory. There are offices there now that if you go to using public space in the old powerhouse and those offices stay there, that makes, as Rachel pointed out, less space available for community use as the community has expressed its desire for. Also, on that same work session of 51622, page 201 of our packets, resolution 23 of 2022, specifically states that the armory should be maximized for community use. Maximizing that for community use doesn't mean to use it for city offices in, in my interpretation. So it was the, after the kerfuffle of the four different entities that were proposed to go in that space, after was turned down after seven months of, of discussion. I think it was also brought up that if it was going to be any commercial use there, you'd have to rezone it because there is no commercial use north of the Roine Fork River that I'm aware of. So that would be an exception. Zoning would have to be changed. So I, council direction going back a couple, several years has been moving everything out of the armory and making that space available for community uses. When we, when this building, when this building was built, one of the reasons for the size was to have more community meeting spaces. We do have a number of spaces that are available for community use. I'd like to have the best of, of both worlds. But number one, and as John mentioned, I don't want to take offices that are in city offices now or city owned assets and move them to a property where we have to pay for rent like we did across the street here for a couple of years. If we have space to move all of the city offices in this vicinity, adjacent to the jail, in the courthouse, in the administration building, in the police departments, or all of the governmental offices are in this center, you know, separated by the Hearst Theater and Rio Grande Park, I, I am strongly in agreement for option two, which is all offices in, in the old powerhouse.
Okay, we need to get a little clarification on a couple of things that were said there, I think. Sarah, do you want to start with that?
I'm happy to. Just again, for the record, I, I did have individual conversations with a majority of you asking if you wanted us to explore these options for you. And the response I got was yes, so that there would be sufficient information for this to come to a public meeting like tonight for discussion. So I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Housland. I do not believe that we are off track. We were asked to prepare this information in order to be able to have tonight's good conversation about these different competing issues. And then the other thing is, is that nothing in what we're proposing tonight involves the lease, the city paying for leasing of private property for housing offices. All the solutions being put for, for you tonight includes all of that housing within city owned buildings. It's a matter of.
Where?
Where? That you would like to see office use over community use. And we're looking forward to hearing that from you as soon as you're ready to give it to us. Thank you.
Sarah, I just want to respond briefly that you had admitted this morning in an email to me that you had had these individual meetings and that there had been no public meeting where this was discussed.
Right, right. And I shared with you, I met with you in August in 2022 and asked if you'd like to see these options. And at that time, you indicated to me, yeah, you were open to the conversation, but we had to do some prep work to be able to have it be a good conversation here.
I think just to add a little bit to, you know, when we're talking about community space and the outreach we did with the public, people were saying there's nowhere to meet. There were different, I'd say, expectations or hopes for the armory with different sizes of spaces being able to meet. We had people who were with a science foundation that was hoping they could do stuff in a space. We had a theater rep who was looking for a smaller space than you can get in the Wheeler. And so there's these different, I think, sizes and expectations of what a meeting space is, depending on the size of the group and, and the need that people are having. And so I think this conversation too is, you know, does this potential space in the powerhouse fit a niche that can't be fit into the powerhouse or is better, excuse me, in the army or is better located in the powerhouse? So decisions haven't been made, but there are a lot of thoughts about how do you keep the building, the armory as flexible as possible as people were hoping to? And what, what is it that people really needed if it's going to be a community space? I think what Rachel said before the meeting started is what, what does it mean to be a community space? We still have to do work on that. I mean, we got feedback, but we still need to dig.
Thanks, Jen. And a lot of the information we're looking for is about to come up in this next, in the armory presentation. You know, this is, this is, this is Tetris, you know? We, we are, this is, this is a jigsaw.
It's not Jenga.
It's not Jenga. This is a jigsaw puzzle that was made by hand. I mean, this is not clean and easy. And we need, we need to hear everything we can in order to put it together. Before we move to the next topic, I just wanted to make sure that the record reflects that we received an email today from Elizabeth Milias on the powerhouse remodel. Her comments were about remembering the, the old plans for the power plant and the brewery or TV station or meeting space. And then also that if city offices are needed, she supports that and emphatically says not a public party barn. I just wanted to make sure that we all are sharing the same input that we're getting from our community.
Thank you for that.
Yep, one last question?
Yep.
Do we know the relative outdoor usable square footage of the sort of grass outside of that potential opening versus the side yard to the armory? I'm sure there's a name for that side yard.
Much larger at the powerhouse. The powerhouse usable space would be pretty close to what you have out here at Galena Plaza as programmable when you look at both sides of the trail.
Three, four times the size, something like that, okay.
Right, you have, you have a lot of trees that affect your ability to use Connor Park that you don't have that same constraint at the powerhouse or here on Galena Plaza.
Party barn.
Okay.
Sounds kind of fun. Thank you, Evan. Thanks.
So.
Thank you.
We're not ready to make a decision on, on programming yet. We'll want to go through the armory presentation and we'll circle back. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let me do my presentation.
Yep, no problem.
I'll be back in a second. Just go ahead, but don't worry about it.
Where did you see? Do you get?
I don't get.
You have to go to my, my.
And sign up for it.
Oh, really? Yeah.
I'll just wait for Rachel to come back?
I think she said to just go.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get started.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jenny Baylin, I'm the development manager for the capital asset department. And tonight we'll be talking about the armory also. The remodel and reuse plan and where we're at with that right now.
Could you point a microphone closer to your?
Sure.
Yep, that'd be great.
Sorry that one was.
And you can turn, yeah, turn them all on. Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
You should probably point that at you a little bit more. Yep.
You gotta like eat it.
You've got plenty of experience.
They're directional.
They're very directional. It's like a hot dog eating contest.
Okay. So tonight, the request of council is, we'll be going over some armory information and we're looking for some direction on proposed next steps for the building.
I just love that picture. I appreciate you putting it up there. It gives me pause for a pause and just some reflection.
The exterior stairwell to get up to the very top floor.
That open space program is so successful.
All right. So a little bit of background, we had two work sessions, one in May and one in September. In May, we really talked about the public outreach that staff had conducted on the armory. We had also, we also talked about a couple of different options in remodeling the building. We've come back with some higher numbers for a remodel and reuse of the building. And we, we wanted to see what you thought about, you know, other options for an interim time period of whether we should be looking at leasing the building, should be looking at a public-private partnership for funding the project. And in the September work session, council requested staff follow-up at a work session after the November election. And the reason being, you're interested in a status update on the ACRA lease negotiations, so where we are at with that, the results of the November ballot initiatives, because there was the short-term rental tax initiative that actually got passed, and we wanted to see if there was going to be any potential revenue streams coming in to the city. You also asked us to come back and talk about the feasibility of leasing more of the armory as an interim use. And basically, what are we thinking as we develop a long-term plan for this building? This is a pretty good picture, too.
Really good.
Okay. So currently, the city and ACRA are in negotiation on space needs. Sarah, feel free to, you've been a little more involved than me, so feel free to add anything you think I need to, to build upon this. Right now, they're looking at a temporary space lease of potentially up to five years. For right now, they're looking at plus or minus thirty-two hundred square feet. They think they can go a little bit smaller, but in looking at the floor plan on the ground floor of the armory, we have basically thirty-two hundred square feet. There's about sixteen hundred square feet of common corridor space. That leaves about, I want to say, just under seven hundred square feet of unprogrammed space on that ground floor. Right, currently. What is also happening in the armory currently is that IT has been moved to the second floor. We have utility billing, I believe, on the first floor currently. And the Clerks Department is using the armory, their old office space for records, storage, and I believe scanning needs. And another thing that'll be coming up is if, depending on what we do with the Main Street Cabin, which we're looking at converting that to a, to city housing for two units, and then a remodel of the armory, we will need some temporary space for certain departments to land while the remodels on the Main Street Cabin and the old powerhouse occur. So that's kind of what's going on right now. When we looked at potential interim additional use of the building, we are currently anticipating some city office use in ACRA on the ground and second story, ground floor and second With the temporary relocation of city departments, we'll need some space for a temporary location while those buildings are remodeled. We're looking at 2024 as that year of remodeling for those buildings. And one of the things that has come up is access control. So basically, we need to be thinking of how do we work with different entities if we were to rent any additional space? Do we want to put money into a building that we are planning on remodeling to have it secure for different uses within the building? Another thing to think about with using this building on a temporary basis is it's zoned public, it's considered an essential public facility, which to a degree is somewhat limiting on what uses can go in that building. City offices can be in there, ACRA is considered a central public facility, but it might be hard to have some other different types of uses in that building on an interim basis. All right, I'm going to go a little bit into the background of, of the outreach, I think, because we've kind of touched on this on the other presentation. So we did outreach in the spring of 2022. We did online surveys through Aspen Community Voice. We did open houses. We did small group meetings to discuss different points and try and drill down on, on what people want to see the armory turn into. I'd say overwhelmingly, people were interested in seeing this building as a community space, a place where people could gather. I liken it almost to a student union, union and hearing what some people say, you know, you can eat, you can.
Aspen State Teachers College.
Yeah, there we go.
You can, you can go hang out, you can, you know, shop a little, whatever, catch some music, but a place that was lively, where you can go and gather. And then, you know, when it was drilled down on some of the preferences, community space was one of them. I agree with Rachel, that needs to be figured out. What does that mean? How do we make that happen and meet the unmet needs of the community? So, you know, we need to, so community space was one. Casual dining was high up there. There was lower price point retail. There was also interest in co-op space and nonprofits. So those were kind of the top uses that rose to the, to the, the top of all the public outreach. When we talked about the range of remodel options, and we brought this before council, we had basically the light touch, which was eleven to sixteen million dollars where you're looking at, bringing up the building to some standard, but not a huge overhaul. Some, we had on the other end, what we called the works. And that was like in this slide, potential addition on the side of the building, looking at removing the second story, which was not original to the building. And the works actually looked at digging the existing basement out to the perimeter walls, because it's not to the perimeter walls today, and digging deeper so that you'd have better head height, because those are a little bit lower. Somewhere in the middle was similar, where it looked at an addition to the building, but not changing basically the existing basement. And that range, that, that, and it would also take up a second story, bringing the building back to more of its original self. You know, redoing all the mechanical, dealing with the exterior of the building, the historic materials, that was estimated at a high level of between eighteen and twenty-three million dollars. Some of the things that people said at the public outreach was, you know, take the time to do it right. Council had landed at the May work session, I believe, somewhere in the middle. And then we just, we had a funding gap.
What is that, what is the depiction that you're using on that slide?
So this was, this was, this is, yeah, essentially the works, or it could be somewhere in the middle. Basically, the existing footprint of the building, the, both somewhere in the middle and the works showed a potential for an addition on the alley side of the building. For, basically, if you took out the second story that's there today, you're going to lose about fifty-five hundred square feet. If you build an addition on the side off the alley, you can gain that square footage back. So you wouldn't lose square footage or bringing the building back to more of its original true self.
That would sit on some of the existing parking?
Yes.
Yes.
And then just for viewing public.
Which had different responses to the parking, you know, losing some of the parking.
Yep. And just for any viewing public, there are historic depictions of the building with an addition of sorts. It was a little bit more of a shed or a garage, if you will, but this is not brand new. That was, there was something like that at one point.
There was actually an exterior stair that went up to the, you see the three gables, went up to one of those gable windows and was actually the entry to that top floor. And then they built the shed addition that housed the, originally, I think it housed, the back housed some heating elements for the building around the turn of the century. And then they built a garage for city.
City vehicles, yeah.
Vehicles.
Thank you.
Jen, just for clarification, are all of these options we're looking at getting rid of the second floor? So it's a basement, first floor, second floor?
The light touch would not, but that also doesn't have an addition. And so you'd, you'd be using the existing floors. The somewhere in the middle and the works both were looking at removing that second floor, which was not original to the building. The biggest head height was originally the, the ground floor when you walk in. When you see a lot of pictures of whether it's a dance or basketball going on, that was on the first floor. And so, as I mentioned, we have, we had a funding gap, and we've had some good ballot results in November. So the short-term rentals ballot initiative was approved, and it's estimated to generate eight to nine million dollars a year. With up to thirty percent of those funds, they can be used towards environmental initiatives and capital maintenance. The city has twelve million in general reserve fund that can be prioritized towards the armory remodel, and the balance of the cost can be financed via debt service. So there's some ability to fund this project. I think the questions are, what are council's priorities for the funding? How do you, are you interested in seeing it funded? And if it is a priority to fund, staff can come back. I can be there, but we'll need finance here to really explain how funding can occur for this project.
Rachel, did you have a question there?
Well, I don't want to interrupt. I'll wait till we get to the end.
That's okay, go.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I was just thinking, I, I think that as I've read the memo and was thinking about this coming into the meeting, I'd like to invest a little more money into potential designs for the armory to see what's possible or not possible. As I was kind of saying before, there's a lot of back of house when you start talking about casual dining and potentially multiple choices in the same spot. And being, pardon me, and, and, you know, at some level, then potentially beginning to use that as a capital campaign as well, and see if there are private dollars that might want to support this project or see an investment in community benefit. I don't know if there's ways to work it out where people investing can get a tax credit or anything like that. There's some pretty complicated things there. But I, as I said earlier, I'd rather have all the offices down at the power plant so that we can maximize the community space up here. And for real public involvement and support, and if it's a ballot question for funding for debt, you, you have to have the type of materials to show people what they're getting out of it and what, what's possible. And so that's the only thing I really thought going through this memo is it's per spending more money on some design work now to, to vet what, what the community room looks like, what layout looks like, what taking the second floor, does it really open up a lot? I think it does. I mean, you don't want to try to retrofit an old office building and pretend it's something new. But, and then I think it would be worth looking at whether there's any level of internal borrowing that we could do as well and be able to save the interest payments per se on outside debt source. I don't know if it's possible or not, but if some amount of the STR mitigation dollars were put towards that, if it was seven hundred and fifty thousand a year over ten years, you know, we could count for ten years worth of fin, I mean, seven point five million worth of additional financing. But I really do think that having the community take ownership and involvement and contributions might really make a difference in the longer-term success of the project as well. So those were just kind of broader thoughts, but I really, I can make some broad statements about what I'd rather see here or there, but to get into what is going to be in that building and how it's going to look when the, the middle of the road or even beyond, because that's where with a capital drive, I think you have an opportunity to let the public know, this is what the government can finance, this is what the city can finance. And we'll start here. But if we have a capital campaign that can raise the other ten million, you, you then have the deluxe model, or you have multiple uses, or you have even more. And, you know, I realize that once you're government, it's a little hard to, to do capital campaigns, that people think your resources are unlimited, but I think the case can be made. I mean, we saw huge investments in the music festival, potential fundraising for any number of our other nonprofits because they were of benefit to the community. And the more that this is very clearly intended and straightforward and known as for the community, I think we could have some success. The other last thing I was going to say is I think we should begin a rezoning process, even if it's on the old building that's going to have temporary uses, so we might be able to see a little more revenue come out of that. Whether or not that equals security costs to, to make that possible or not, I, I need a little bit of analysis. But I, if it's going to not be refurbished for a period of time, as we've heard for other things, moving pieces and fundraising, it would be great to find a way to still maximize vacant space and potentially create a little revenue for the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Skippy, then Ward?
Yep. Thinking very much along the same lines. Question I had, as it relates to this first bullet, do we have a suggestion of what portion of those funds? Because I can see some amount, but, you know, it fits into the, the capital piece, but, you know, that capital piece, we were thinking about sewer and pipe and, you know, structural issues at APCHA, and there's a lot of other needs, so a piece maybe, but do we have a sense of how much we're really thinking?
No, as council's discretion.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
And I want to be clear though, too, because others have asked me about this, we have allocated additional monies from a different source for, for stormwater treatment. So that, that, that's, that's out in, in terms of, but there are other things, obviously. There's a lot of needs.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something that has broad community support, would have community benefit and all the rest of it. So that's great, but there's just some, you know, kind of bigger picture, structural issues with housing, et cetera, that I think I was thinking of first in that. So, yeah, just to kind of tag on to Rachel, my thinking was the same. And I think, you know, to me, I believe that the, the success of whatever we ultimately deliver in the long term will be directly related to the community's involvement and ownership upfront. And so I'd really like to see us engaging with those groups that have a lot of zeal around this early and really let them help us do the due diligence about what, where's the excitement, what will the use be, what will it look like, what will the design be? Because the more they have ownership over that and feel like they've been able to steer that project, I think the, the more motivated and successful they will be in exactly what Rachel's talking about, which is bringing in funds from private partners. And they can help us think about different models for delivering that, from the very traditional of that wing is the whomever wing, to, you know, Chris Bendon talked about for years, more of a co-op model, right, where the community could buy into something in some way or support it in, in small chunks. So, so I agree, I want to develop that more, but I really want to see that be involved in and community-led so that they can help us be most successful in that down the road.
Thank you. Ward, and then John?
Yeah, we've been talking about this for over a year. On the seventh, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, we had a work session. We, staff recommended and we agreed that there should be public outreach. That, that happened and was presented to us on May sixteenth. And just so, to bring this back to the public's awareness, that we are analyzing design based upon what the public outreach indicated to us were the needs and wants of the community. Those top three needs were restaurant casual dining, the highest one was for multipurpose space meetings and events, and nonprofit services. And just to bring this back to the public's awareness, that we are analyzing design based upon what the public outreach indicated to us were the needs and wants of the community. Those top three needs were restaurant casual dining, the highest one was for multipurpose space meetings and events, and nonprofit services. Those were the top three in the survey from, that was presented on May 2016. So, May 16th, 2022.
Yeah.
So I just want to remind the public, this is, this is, we're not going for designs without listening to what the public has indicated that they want. So we've had a public-guided outcome already. I'm not sure that a public-led is going to get us where we want to go in any kind of timeframe. I think collaboration and cooperation is important, but it's, I mention these things just because I think we have started the process of public outreach, now you're coming back, staff is coming back, but where do you want to go with it? We had the resolution on 23 of Series 2022 that said that as much space as possible for the armory should be used for community use. So those are my guiding, my guiding elements are what the public has said they wanted, and what we as a council have taken as a resolution, that we're going to devote as much space as possible for community use.
And I think, you know, that there needs to be additional public outreach, because the building has a finite amount of space. So at some point, it, there might be competing goals of, we want all these different things, but really, this is what can be fit in the building to be successful. And what are the trade-offs? And those are things that I think the public's going to have to be involved in, particularly as we further the design.
That's right. And Ward, I would just, I would just add that, you know, the public has said they want the most community space. We've said we want the most community space, but when we went back and did our go-it-alone math, we said, well, we can't deliver the most because we can't dig it out, and so we need the public to be part of it to achieve that.
Financing is absolutely part of going forward, the financing, but I don't think we're quite at that place where we have to decide what the financing is, because we don't have, we don't even have a conceptual, we have several conceptuals, we don't have a schematic, we haven't made a decision exactly, but financing is, it's going to be a, yeah.
John, and before you come, so far, we've seen the background slide.
There's a lot of background.
You have a couple more slides as well, and more presentation from you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's more to come.
Saying we're right ahead.
I just wanted to say I fully support this, moving forward as quickly as we can. I think we've got an opportunity to deliver a very cool community asset right in the middle of town, that as Jen said, will help us meet our community's unmet needs. So however we can move this along quicker, I would support that.
I appreciate that comment. You know, looking through our materials for the meeting, I noticed the timeline that's possibly laid out, and there it is.
There you go.
Oh, it's, we're still in background, as a matter of fact. And I, I agree with some of your sentiment there, John, it did look a little bit far out. We've made some decisions at this council table that have sequenced some of what we're doing, so I don't know that there's really an opportunity to revisit that, or if that's fruitful to revisit, in order to expedite a timeline and get this facility online sooner than 2030. So thank you for that comment. We'll talk more about that, a little bit more about that, but we have gone over that conversation before. I had just a couple of quick questions for clarification. My first question is, Sarah, did you share with me that you were able to kind of find some similar but different examples of facilities like what we're talking around?
Well, first, I just need to agree with Jennifer's comments that the wish list is probably bigger than the bag, so to speak, that I don't think you can execute all of those elements well in this space, and why we'll be asking for your help in understanding what we heard from the community, and where you think we need, we need to go. We are aware of some other examples, both in smaller ski towns, as well as in suburban areas, depending upon which elements you prioritize, but I think Council Richard's hit it on the head, is that maybe people don't understand really how big some of the workspace needs to be to support the retail component, whether it's a food and beverage component in particular, in a meaningful way. So yes, we have, I think we identified one in that meeting, just four, five, six of them already, that we said we need to understand the ownership structure. Our experience is, a few of these are government-run, most of them are nonprofit or privately-run, which is a big conversation that we'll have to get into as this goes forward over the next several years.
Wow. Thank you for that, and I, you know, I think everybody can visualize things differently, everybody learns differently and the like, so, you know, sometimes visual examples, and any existing facilities would probably be helpful for everybody just to kind of get their head around, especially when it comes to the size and the capabilities of what we're dealing with. That was my first question. My second question was, when we talk about design, and I think I'm looking over at Scott more than anything, Scott, we've gotten different examples that open up the interior. Right now, it is four floors, basement, one, two, and three, and ceiling heights of maybe 10 feet, nine or eight maybe even, so.
Nine or eight.
Yeah, so, so less than 10-foot ceiling. So I think we're all collectively thinking that we are not leaving all four floors in the configuration that they're in now.
Yes.
Right? So Scott, Jen was talking about the second floor being removed, because historically, there was the, what I would call the attic space, or the third floor, as we call it. There was no second floor, there was a first floor.
There was, there was no basement.
And no basement.
There was the ground floor. The, then there was the, what we today would call the third floor.
Okay.
That's where, at the turn of the century, lodges met on that top floor. There was a mezzanine above the ground floor, because they used, it was for the armory, they did drills, and so people would watch the drills from the mezzanine, and what we think happened was, they just continued that mezzanine all the way across, probably, you know, in like the 40s, 50s time era, to create more space.
And then Scott, the current configuration has an elevator shaft running pretty much down the middle of the building?
That's correct.
So opening up in any respect requires that to be moved?
I think so, yeah.
But whether we decided to, I guess, is there anything that we won't do, meaning the first floor, the entry floor from Galena Avenue? We would not be getting rid of that first floor, or would you even think about that, opening it up down to the basement?
Only in the expensive option.
I think that's part of the design iteration, of really looking how to utilize that space well, to create a space that can function far into the future.
So you're saying it's possible? There are possibilities there.
So the constraints we have are the, the Galena entry and the alley entry pretty much need to stay the same. So we're not going to be moving doors and windows, those are historic constraints. The interior of the building, you know, you could gut the whole building and build a whole new structure inside of it. That's, that's spending the most money.
Is that concept in the works, or not even in the works?
The original works was to just get rid of the second floor and actually dig deeper, so the basement had better floor-to-ceiling height, and also met the perimeter of the building, because it's a smaller footprint than the other floors.
But even as she described, it requires a lot of structural work. What's in there now is a post-and-beam construction built in the 1800s.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to bring all that out, so that we're all kind of aware of the realm of possibilities here. We've all gotten some iterations and drawings from folks, and I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward, we all are kind of speaking the same language.
Yeah.
Sure. Skippy wanted to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, what you said, right, which is we've gotten these different iterations, and, you know, in my mind, this sort of three-story atrium is a beautiful thing to think about, and there's two ways it could happen. Flat floor, hollow out the middle to the top with the skylights like pictured, or, like you said, you dig the basement and you walk in and go down, but you keep the, so the three-story atrium goes to the third story, and the offices are up there, right, for ACRRA. But both of those would require far more funding than we currently have, but possible.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I think the one thing we all agreed on in prior meetings is that if you were just to open it up as-is, kind of repaint it and re-carpet it, it would fail. It's not community space, it doesn't lend itself to larger spaces, and so at least one level of the building would have to come out to start to reconfigure it. And I'll just say, this is why I was saying I think that we should let staff have the time to think about what would be the appropriate number, to go out and do a little more design work, and I'm talking about the design work of saying, okay, if you're going to have a casual dining establishment, how much square foot does it take? What is the minimum? What can, what can the big rap operate under? You know, and multiply that by three or four, and say, well, if we had four different options in here, this is how much space it takes. But we don't have that, we don't have that. So everyone is visualizing all sorts of things. And for me, I love the idea of an atrium, and I love the idea of the open space or stairwell like we have here, but the more you open up that big gaping space, the less space you have for actual events, or people, or meeting, or the kitchens. And so I don't want to dedicate the majority of the building to open air, and that's a real concern of mine. So, but I think that by allocating and staff coming back with some money to offer us some designs, and some, you know, the other really bad example that relates to this, though, was the red brick. And when we went to purchase the red brick and tell the community there was going to be a bonding vote, it was going to cost them money, there was work done to say how much square footage was available in each room, and if we were renting it at this amount, the building will produce that. And we need to know roughly how much square footage some of these activities really need to be successful. We looked at the power plant, and there's a certain size room that could handle 100 to 300 people. Well, let's plan on at least that size or more in this building, and then how much space if you wanted to add some of these other wonderful events. I mean, I love the idea of the gathering space, that we could have a weekly winter's farmer's market, that we could have a once-a-month artisan show of local artists, local craftspeople. There's so many things we can do with the space, but we need to start knowing how big the various Legos are. Thank you.
Question for you, Scott. The basement does not, the basement does not go to the perimeter of the building. My question is, how, what is the foundation of the building? Is it, is it solid? I know there's a cherry picker that went in and inspected a couple of years ago. What was the outcome of that? And what's the, do we need to really be thinking about putting a full foundation under this building to make it last? Especially if we want to expand the floor print of the basement to the outer walls. What is there now is some rubble stone, so basically stone stacked on stone, and some concrete. So I think what was done was originally a rubble stone foundation, and then later structural found, concrete walls added. But the answer to your question is yes. If you want a building up, built up to today's standards, it needs a new foundation.
And what were the results of that inspection by a cherry picker?
I'm trying to remember the cherry picker study you're talking about.
We had, we had somebody come in and do an inspection of.
Roof down?
No, it was from the street, and it was during COVID, I think.
We, sorry, I'm going to get, during the start of this, we did, had someone come and look at the materials, and doing an assessment of the materials of the building. We did have an engineer walk in. I can't tell you off the top of my head what the results were. I know there is some structural steel that got put in, because they had lots of questions of some of the rafters, and walking through the, how the building was built, and what got added. And that was in 2022, we had a historic materials assessment of the building.
And all of these require our specing to have re-tucking and replacing of old bricks that are deteriorated?
There's definitely some deterioration of some of the materials on the building.
And the last clarification was, moving forward, we have designated this as the location for ACRRA Visitor Center moving forward. As well as ACRRA offices, or just Visitor Center?
Now, the commitment that City Council made back in 2018, I believe is the right lease year, was that, that they would be the priority, be a priority office use and Visitor Center use in the building. And so we have maintained that, as that was a contractual commitment we made in conjunction with signing the lease at the powerhouse.
I think it was 2019, because when we sat down, we started moving ACRRA office from this building, because it was originally, it was originally.
Go lay a grand parking garage, you mean?
Yeah, out of that corner over there, under the crowd.
Like, top of my head, 18 or 19, I can, I can look it up if that will help you further the.
A previous council.
We, there is a, there has been a commitment, a consistent commitment to support ACRRA through subsidized office space located in the core area, and the armory was identified as the place it would go, and this council was part of that conversation.
Yeah.
When, I recall when I was in a room, there was a desire to integrate ACRRA offices into City Hall. We had a lot of conversations about ACRRA's identity not being so tied to the city, and being a membership-based organization, which is where that, I think that compromise came from. I recall what you're talking about now, it was with this council.
Yeah.
Minus John.
Sorry.
Minus John. I put his name at the table at that time, when that decision was made.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to remember that as well, is that that's current commitment, is that, is that ACR would be in some of the states. Anyway, thank you for those clarifications. Let's get back to background.
I won't do this next time. Too many slides with background on it.
I think it's our fault, not the slides.
So we've kind of talked about where we've been with some outreach, high-level design, and cost estimating, some of the interim needs of, of city offices with other projects coming online for construction, needing some temporary landing space for staff. What we, the city's looking at, city staff is looking at is a potential five-year planning, design, and entitlement, and funding timeline. And so basically, we are looking at the Main Street Cabin and the Old Powerhouse going under construction 2024, landing some staff temporarily in the armory. And what we'd be doing in that timeframe is getting the design going, getting more public outreach going, in that five-year timeframe. We'd need the entitlements, so land use approvals, apply for building permit, RFP for construction, make sure all the funding's in place, and we are looking at digging in 2028 right now.
Good. When do we think people would, in the most expeditious universe, when would departments leave the armory to go back to the old power plant, if that's where we choose to put them?
I think probably second quarter 2025, but, you know, if there are some delays, it could be 24, 2025, where that remodel would occur.
Okay.
So a different direction requested.
We're making progress.
So, one, a number of questions that staff has, and we'll, we'll need to talk about the Old Powerhouse also. the Old Powerhouse also, is with the extent of the remodel, are we still looking at moving forward with somewhere-in-the-middle remodel concept as the target? Obviously, things can change as you get more information and better numbers on funding, but at, in May, it looked like somewhere-in-the-middle was where council was landing.
That's where we landed. I'll start the conversation just because it maybe make it easier. I think the one that we don't want was the, the basic, because leaving the current configuration of the building leaves us with something that is limited in its future uses. So I didn't hear any support for that back in the day. Today, at the meeting, we've heard a lot of requests for, you know, some, some design thought, some examples to be brought back and the like. So I think we are at somewhere-in-the-middle, maybe plus, but we just don't know.
Right.
Is that okay, council, to characterize that?
Yeah, I think that's right. And just Rachel's point about circulation usable space lands, and I would love to see some specifics come back. Two that stand out to me that, like, personal experience with, that I would love to understand. I think Hawker Centers in Singapore are probably the best example of community food areas that I've seen anywhere in the world, and I'd love to, like, kind of understand what Rachel's comments are for that. And then a more localized example, Avanti in Denver. It doesn't have the other community stuff, but I think it's another really successful that has to deal with American constraints that I'd love to understand your questions around.
And the next one, providing direction on funding of the remodel. Funding of the remodel, I heard from a couple of us, is a council priority, and that there was a sentiment also that we'd love to even see it come to fruition even sooner, if it was possible. But there are a lot of questions around this financing and different schemes that can work out here. What's interesting is, it sounds like we have more options and more availability. I want to say thank you to the voters of Aspen, you know, for giving us, as a community, the opportunity to move forward with this as timely as we can. So, does council members, do council members have any different views on whether the remodel of this is a priority, and, and any further comments on financing? And Rachel already, Rachel did share a couple, like, potentials to look into and the like. So I'll start with Rachel, and then see if other council members will-
Yeah, thank you. I'll be fast. I'm interested in moving forward with somewhere-in-the-middle. I think we should have funding options, a couple of different plans, not a plan, so we can look at. And for me, I really would like to look at the potential of a capital drive as well, and whether internal borrowing would work at all either. I, I'm okay with the interim use, but again, I'd like a quick look to see if there's a way to have it secure enough to have other temporary uses or part-time uses in there, both for the revenue and the fact that community members need that, you know? And it's just a lot to sit vacant until another five years from now or so, if we, if we can't. And then I really just think we need to see some potential space allocations. It's less design work than saying, these are how many pieces you have that people want to put in that sack, and these are how many really fit in that sack. And then my goal would be to have it move forward as quickly as we really can, but that, that quickly really is about the power plant, and it's about the moving, and it's about all the shuffling around. And so the sooner we can move any of those forward, the better. I would also, at the appropriate time, and it's not now, but maybe as the power plant gets going and some of those things are happening, say, is, is this something that we should contract some of the work out to be able to move it forward more quickly? Does it have to be all done in-house? Or would it move forward more quickly and get community use in there sooner if we were to hire some people to work with us for it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a clarification on that? Do we have the opportunity to look at that, not only for the planning work, but also operations of the space?
I would say, look at that for sure.
Great, thank you.
Further comments? Ward?
Yeah, based on what Scott mentioned, I'd like clarity from the rest of council. Are we looking at middle-of-the-road plus, so that we're actually digging a foundation and putting a basement around the perimeter of the building where it doesn't exist now?
You know, Ward, this is where, for me, it's a lot about the space needs. If they come back and say, you're going to get one good meeting room, AC area offices, and one restaurant, if we just stay with middle-of-the-road, because that's all the room there is for, and there'll be a nice atrium, then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna look forward to saying, okay, well, what else can we add? What else can we do? I, I think it'd be nice if you are able to say, this is middle-of-the-road, and this is what plus add-ons would be like. I, I, I can't even imagine the undertaking to lift that building and build a whole new foundation underneath it to extend out. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's why the foundation of the basement right now is smaller than the existing foundation, because they didn't want to mess with that. And, you know, I was here when they opened that building up, and I looked in the hole and saw that statue of the Virgin Mary holding the beam up. You know, it just, they were always a little nervous about going much further out on that building.
Yeah, that's, that's one of my questions here during basement construction. Would the building still be usable? I know the Paragon Building dug a basement while the building was in use. It didn't have a basement, and they did go through that back in the 70s.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's going back, but I don't know if we could even use this building if we were gonna-
Wouldn't.
Short answer is no.
Yeah, short answer is no.
Well, I think we, we have one reason why the armory only took how many months to build.
Back in the day.
Yeah, I'm, I want to look for different financing options. Anytime we can produce something without it having all come from city government funds, it's a plus to me. I don't know if we do a fundraising, if we, if we bond, I don't know, but it, I think that definitely has a, an impact on the time, the timeline. If we have more funds, we can probably do more of an accelerated timeline. I don't, I don't particularly like the timeline, but if that's what we live with, that's what we have to live with. But if there's a way to expedite that, I'd like to see that. And I, I agree that we should, for interim use, we should free up as much space as we can, because we're still talking about a number of years.
Safely and logistically.
Yeah.
Yeah. John, your input on these questions?
I'm gonna pare it what everybody else has said. Yeah, I think somewhere-in-the-middle plus, I'm all for. Interim use of the building, obviously, we're, we're heading in the right direction. Yeah, the only issue I have, which I've already said, was I just wish we could move a little faster, but I understand the constraints.
Further input? Question first. ACR Office space, previous slide, 3,200 square feet. I thought we had talked earlier about it could be smaller in the permanent.
That's in the, they're discussing that right now.
Okay.
I, I don't want to say it's going to be smaller and it not turn out to be smaller and you're disappointed. So-
Got it.
They had looked at some floor planning, it's about 3,200 square feet. They're looking at shaving that down. We had some conversations, so it's, it's in the mix.
Got it.
An example of that is, is where are community meeting rooms when they need them at ACR? So if that's a use, it's programmed in the armory, and it becomes a rentable space that they use for their programming needs, rather than having to rent it, rather than having it built into their core lease, there's some flexibility like that to take into consideration.
Got it. So, yeah, agreed. Somewhere-in-the-middle plus, somewhere-in-the-middle, sort of the base of what we can do. The plus, I think, will be determined primarily by how much the community wants it and wants to be involved in it. I want to explore different funding options, both internally, but I want to reach out to potential community partners and get a sense of how and if they'd want to be involved, so that we're not making upstream decisions that could preclude their involvement or help later. I think they will be best to be asking for money over the city, and so the more excited and involved they can be, the better. And interim use of the building, yeah, I mean, as it is, and I guess we haven't explicitly said this, but I, I share, what I think I'm hearing is, you know, let's make the old power plant, the offices, keep it in one spot. You know, I do think that the party barn could be fun, but I think there's a bunch of, a bunch of saws on the other end of that that make it unlikely anyways. So let's put the eggs in this basket and have the most over here is, is where I'm leaning. And then on pace of project, you know, we're not going to do any work until at least this mid-2024, from what I understand, because any movement has to happen. If there was sufficient funding and alignment, the next several years of planning could be squeezed down. And so, you know, that's something that I'm open to, but I think there's a lot more we've got to figure out before we know if that's possible. But I'd love to see it happen in an ideal world.
A lot of good input here. I will just chime in on a couple items. Really, I'll just skip to question number three there. The only thing that I keep asking about on interim use of the building is the, the space that we're designing, I hope it's extremely welcoming, not to be redundant in a welcome center, but, you know, with the availability of that first-floor space, it would be wonderful if there was the opportunity for, you know, guests that are coming in town or even locals, a place to sit down. Not just a visitor center where you get a card from a rack and you listen to this or listen to that, but a place to actually take a load off and relax for a second would be really wonderful. And then I also am interested in getting more information about what uses or what tenants could we have in the interim time? If there's additional space that's available, who in the community would be interested in that? And how would it work out for the community and the city to be managing that? And provide direction on proposed remodel timeline? I'm in the same boat. I'd love to get it done sooner than later. And I keep sitting here trying to think, boy, is there, can we move piece A over there and do this and get the armory going? Yeah, exactly, but I, I, I just don't, I just don't know it because of space needs. Sarah has a question, then, Skippy.
So what we'll do in our, it's not a question, Mr. Mayor, it's just a statement in response. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we will do is, we'll bring you back what it looks like if you chose to rent office space in order to change your timeline. You may decide it's of community benefit to go ahead and do that instead of this cascading move process as one of the options for you to look at. Well, also, when we look at financing, one of the things I'm hearing around the financing is that there's still a desire to use cash on hand as the primary funding source and then supplement that, which I would agree with, with what's happening right now in the municipal bond market, not really in our favor, even with our credit rating. I wouldn't suggest that unless that's really, fits the whole plan. And I would want you to consider that cash on hand priorities in conjunction with your entire asset management plan, because we will be asking you to choose between some fundamental services of the community that might take a little longer to accomplish if you choose to fund this more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Skippy?
Just one last comment that you brought up, and maybe too detailed to be thinking about now, but, you know, when we were looking at the old power plant, the idea of kind of like opening up that space to the park is really attractive for community events or whatever. And I just think about, you know, Connor Park's activation during the farmer's market, for instance, where it's a food court. And so, you know, are there opportunities to create better connection between the back of the building and that park? Right now, we exit from the base and go up, but maybe there's a ground-floor level and other things. But just to think about that connectivity piece of that park, I think it's interesting.
Thank you for that. Any questions from you, Jen?
I just want to make sure we heard that with the Old Powerhouse, the interest is city offices, no, meeting space, and meeting space-
Maybe a trellis in the lawn in case someone wants a picnic.
If we could just have it on the microphone, because we will have to go back and watch this, because the conversation sometimes goes back and forth. We just want to make sure we've got you all.
Offices.
Offices.
Yeah, offices, and looking to have some level of lawn use available for people.
A nice trellis, some lights, maybe a Passover seder.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to support the direction that this is going because of the desire to open up the armory for full community use and not have city offices there. I was very excited about having public service space down by the river and in the old power plant. I thought that was really wonderful, and I really appreciate staff putting the time they did to see if they could return that to us. If I have to choose one or the other, and it sounds like I do, I, I would move the offices out of the armory, put them down in the old power plant. But I, for years, have thought that the old power plant would be a wonderful place for community gatherings and community uses. So I was very excited about that possibility. Does that answer your question?
I think I know what you would prefer, but-
We don't always get what we want up here, you know?
Yes.
I want to add something else to the record. This council did receive a, an email January 29th. This one was from Richard Lai, Susan Welch, and Susan Shapiro. I see Susan Shapiro's here in the audience with us. They sent a joint letter to us titled, Restoring Aspen's Landmark Armory and Former City Hall as a festive marketplace and town center. They're advocating for a lot of the ideas that we talk about here with maybe a little bit more of a market-type and retail atmosphere inside. So again, I'm sharing public input so that everybody knows that we hear you.
And we all received that.
Yep. All right. Did you have any follow-up questions, Evan?
No, I just thought you guys might, so.
All right, great.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tyler.
To the next meeting. I can finish up with their up to. Thanks, Jen.
Can you unplug me over there?
And then can I call it to order and get going? Great. So this will be a call to order, City Council for the City of Aspen. This is a special meeting scheduled for today, Monday, the 6th. I think we scheduled it for 5:30, so we're getting it going now at 5:57. Could I have a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm playing the role of the clerk today, is James R. Tru. Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
This is a-
No rush, I'm on my end.
Counselor Howenstein.
Present.
Yes.
Counselor Mesro.
Also present.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
See ya.
Jim, would you like to tell us the purpose of the special meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The special meeting has been called specifically for the purpose of the executive, of proposed executive session. Staff is recommending that council go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024A, Purchase, Acquisition, Lease, Transfer, Sale of Real Personal Property, 4B, Conferences with the Attorney for Local Public Body, Purposes of Receiving Legal Advice on Specific Legal Questions, and 4E, Terminating Positions Relative to Matters That May Be Subject to Negotiations, Developing Strategy for Negotiations, Instructing Negotiators. Specific Items of Discussion Involved: Ongoing Litigation, Including, or Specifically the Centennial Owners Association versus City of Aspen, Case Number 215CB01030158, and Case Number 2017CA2099. Lease Transfer and Acquisition of Real Property, Real or Prop, Real Property or Property Interest Contract Negotiations or Communications with Council Regarding Such Subjects. However, Due to Market Forces, Negotiation Strategies, and Compedentiality Demands of Parties Involved and Necessitated by the Subject of the Specific Legal Advice, which further disclosure would be a detriment to the City's Strategic Position, Zapped Properties cannot be disclosed. And finally, Legal Advice Regarding the 1994 Settlement Agreement in Centennial Aspen 2 Limited Partnership, United States Versus, Centennial Aspen Limited Partnership versus the City of Aspen at All, United States District Court Civil Action Number 92B2570. If Council Moves to Go Into Executive Session, Executive Session Will Be Recorded. The Recording Will Be Maintained by the Clerk for a Period of Not Less Than 90 Days.
I would move to go into executive session per the citation from the city attorney.
One second.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for going into executive session?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mesro.
See.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
And as usual, we will convene the executive session downstairs. When we come out of executive session, the council will convene and adjourn the meeting at that time and not reconvene up, up here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.